The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Board Session of April 7, 2022, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please join me in the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's my pleasure to read a statement for National School Library Month. Whereas the school library is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, and whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part of the instructional program of the school, and whereas the Wayne Board of Education has entrusted the school library in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, to provide literature-appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student; and whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the school library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools; and whereas the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education; and whereas the school librarians of Wayne Township Public Schools have dedicated themselves to work for quality school libraries for all students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Wayne Township Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2022 as School Library Month in all of the public schools, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Wayne to recognize and support this action, and participate through the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month. Thank you very much. Dr. Tobat?
So what I'd like to do is just expand a little bit on your comments and just talk about our librarians or media specialists. And so April 4th of every year is National School Librarian Day, and it recognizes professionals who keep the school libraries and working with the school librarians, spend long hours keeping the libraries organized, but also dedicated to helping children find resources they need to keep learning. School librarians are the people who create an environment where students can learn every day of the year. Their work is an impressive accomplishment. Our librarians provide guidance and expose our youth not only to text, print media, and literature, but also to digital resources and technology as well. These resources also connect them to libraries around the world. The school librarian's ability to manage scores of media in a school full of students, all participating in multiple projects and schedules, is astounding. So thank you to all of our school media specialists for their excellent work in making our libraries some of the very best school libraries in New Jersey. So we're also grateful for the enormous contributions of Wayne's assistant principals. They make each and every day a priority where helping students is their number one job. This year, our celebration takes an event of greater significance as we recognize all assistant principals that have conquered and helped us through the pandemic. Their roles have evolved and expanded to include many new responsibilities. We're so proud of them and appreciate their leadership and their unwavering commitment to our schools. It's National School Assistant Principal Week, and congratulations and thank you to all of our assistant principals. I'd like to give the community a COVID update. Unfortunately, COVID cases in the Wayne schools are following along the statewide trend, showing gradual increase. Here in the Wayne schools, our numbers have been increasing over the past few weeks, as yesterday we had 24 students and staff absent due to testing positive for COVID and 44 others absent due to quarantine. Two weeks ago, we had only 13 testing positive and 23 were quarantined. So you can see, our numbers have approximately doubled in just two weeks. If you go back a month ago, we had only three students and staff positive and five people under quarantine, with many days, no additional staff or students testing positive. So over a month, you could see things have kind of gone the wrong direction. Our concern is, of course, spring break and the impact spring break will have on our schools when we reopen. Just like to take a moment to recognize our high school sports teams, high school's spring teams recently started their seasons, and we wish all of our teams great success. This evening, the board is going to be hearing the third and final presentation regarding a possible bond referendum. Previously, the board heard from a public relations consultant who spoke about how to get the community involved in the discussion about a possible referendum, and then with our architects to discuss their recommendations for various projects across the district. At this point, the board will hear from financial advisors to learn more about the financial impact of moving ahead with the referendum. Before we get to that, I'd like to do the HIV report. So I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in Wayne Township Public Schools. There were 14 incidents of HIVs that were investigated since my last report. Seven of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of HIV incidents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tobat. And we're going to have our bond presentation? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Robbie A. Cora from Phoenix Advisors, and my coworker Danielle Moreno. I guess you may have heard some of this before if you've had other presentations on the bond referendum, but I'll go through the PowerPoint and feel free to ask any questions as we go through. Danielle's going to talk about some numbers after we go through the main part of the presentation. So some of the reasons to have a bond referendum primarily are not finance projects that can't fit into your operating budget. School districts over the past 10 years have been allowed to start putting some money aside in capital reserve, but most districts can't take care of all their capital needs with just a capital reserve. And a big reason to do a referendum is to take advantage of state aid that the state gives for school districts that could get a successful referendum. The state provides debt service aid for certain projects. There's different levels of debt service aid. If you were doing renovations, you can get a higher percentage than you can for new construction, for example. There's also some costs that are allowable and some costs that are not allowable for debt service aid, but many districts that don't get a lot of state aid generally in their operating budget, take advantage of state facilities aid because it really is out there for everyone to take advantage of. So it's a big part of why you should do a bond referendum. Once the referendum's approved, the principal and interest payments are outside of the cap. So once you go to the voters and the bonds are sold, the question of paying the debt service never goes back to the voters because it was approved in that one vote to the voters. It's a separate tax levy, so it's not something that you have to worry about every year when you're doing your budget. It's outside of the cap. And obviously, doing capital improvements has, you know, a good useful life. So it's an opportunity to do major projects over 10, 15, 20, sometimes 25 years. The term of the borrowing is based on the useful life of those projects, so it's not like you're going to do, you know, a bathroom renovation that might only last 10 years and finance that for 25 years. There has to be some reasonableness in the term that you pick to be able to do the referendum. There's only four times a year plus November that you can do a referendum, so there's specific dates in January, March, September, and December. And then you can always go at the general election in November. Districts that still get their budget approved in April could go in April also. Most referendums are happening in September or December. There's a lot of discussion. People can tell you, we think September's the best time, December's the best time, January's the best time. It's really up to the district to decide when the best time is, and if you talk to the information office, public information folks that were here, they probably have some opinions about that. Again, it's a simple majority of the vote, just need one vote. It's a mandate, so the projects are authorized and that's it, once they're approved. This is just in general terms what has to happen. Nine months before the election is what we think now is a reasonable time to decide on the project, and that's primarily because of the second bullet, that the State Department of Education facilities has to approve the project to give you debt service aid. And they've been short on staff for a while, and we say that you really need six months to submit it up there for them to approve the project. If you don't get your approvals, you can't have the referendum. We've had districts schedule referendums and have to pull them because they don't have their Department of Education approvals. Now everyone knows you've got to have it there at least six months in advance. I think the statute says it's 90 days that they have to review them, and then if they see something, they can have another 90 days, but six months is a safe number of months. So that's really important to get it. You know, when you're reviewing projects, obviously there's a process you have to go through to decide what you want to do with the referendum, but it's very important to know, you know, if you're going to go in December, then, you know, by May, really, you need to get those projects up to the sleeve. So two to three months, we should have the DOE approval. And that's when they're going to tell you, this is the percentage that you're going to get for debt service aid on these projects. You actually get letters for each project that you submit there, and that's what we need really to refine the numbers for you for the tax impact. This is an aside, and you'll hear this later on, but the state says they give you 40% debt service aid on eligible projects. About, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, they started decreasing that 40% by 15%. So when you do the math, you only really get 34% debt service aid. It's kind of ironic because the question has to say, the school district is asking permission to borrow $10 million, and they will receive 40% debt service aid, but it's not 40% debt service aid. But when we do the tax impact calculations, we always go through all of our assumptions, and it's just important to remember, it's not 40%, it's 34%. And frankly, unless you're doing renovations, you usually don't get a whole project that is a 40% eligible project. But again, once you decide on the projects and the architects of this, you'll get an idea. So two to three months before is when the board adopts the resolution for the bond referendum. This is really just the details of all those highlights that I just mentioned about the nine months, the seven months, six months, et cetera, and the responsible party. This is a standard timeline that either a bond council or ourselves would submit. Once you get close to the referendum, there's a calculation that has to be done for your allowable debt to make sure you're not exceeding your debt capacity. I don't think you're going to have any problems here with that, but there is a capacity that this district has. So to develop the plan, every community is different, but usually there's a committee of the board or a committee of the community that has spent some time trying to decide on what projects are needed. Sometimes they're enrollment-driven, sometimes they're program-driven if you want to start new pre-K, new programs, things like that. Frankly, I'm not sure of the enrollment situation. There's not a lot of towns in New Jersey that have increased enrollment, but there are some. So some are building some additions because they've got enrollment increases. For the most part, a lot of the projects we're working on are renovation-type projects, not necessarily new construction. But usually when the plan comes together, there's something for everyone in the plan because you need to bring in everyone to, you know, to sort of buy in, to get the approval. You've probably heard this before if you've talked to a public relations folks, but again, the message has to be clear. You really need to decide on the project first, and then have us do the tax impact for you, and then release the tax impact one time. You know, rumors get started even before social media. People would go to 7-Eleven and have coffee and say, hey, I heard you're doing a referendum and it's going to cost $400, and it's not going to cost $400. So word of mouth was just that way before even social media. So we really try to say, districts are anxious, they're going to say, we're going to do a $10 million referendum, what's it going to cost? We can do projections for you of what it's going to cost, but until the state comes back and tells you what your eligible costs are, it really is projections, and I really would recommend that it not get released until we've got all those details. Danielle's got numbers that are going to say to you, here's what a zero tax impact can be, here's what 1 million can be, here's what 5 million can be. But I just would definitely caution you on what, when you release it, to say, you know, these are the numbers. We work with clients all the time that are anxious to get that out there, and I think it's, I can't stress enough that you need to get the information from the state of what your debt service aid is going to be before you let the tax impact out there because you don't know. I mean, 34% debt service aid is a big number. It can swing as low as 10% or 5%, but it could be 34%. So I definitely would caution you on that. And then, you know, this is really a public information opportunity that I think six to eight weeks out is when you release all the information to the public. You don't want it to go too early, you don't want it to be too late where people say that they weren't notified about the referendum. So, excuse me, so I think that's really important. We've had districts that have had September referendum that didn't educate the public and people were away over the summer, all of a sudden they felt like they came back from summer vacation, and here there's a referendum you want us to approve in three weeks. You have to keep that in mind for, you know, when you're talking about the public information part of it. How is the message delivered? You know, website, public hearing, we go to public hearings all the time to present the information. Sometimes there's recordings of a presentation that's up on the district's website, things like that, and obviously written materials that are out there. Again, you need to get the information out to all the potential voters, again, I think for putting a lid on any rumors about this, you need to have the information out there. You know, there's some towns that say, oh, all the senior citizens are going to vote no, they're not going to want for us. But you really need to bring them in and give them an opportunity to know what these projects are going to be. We've been in many, many, many public hearings, and there are some seniors that do support these projects. I mean, they go to increasing maintaining your home values because people want to move to towns for their education. So I think it is valid to bring in everybody in the whole of the community when you have these communication opportunities. We do a Q and A usually, and I'm sure if you're going to be using a public relations or information firm, they have all the information that we think, you know, should be out there. We've all worked together, there's a few of the firms that are out there that we, you know, it's basic standard information that needs to be out there. Once you're talking about the projects and, you know, you've got this whole list of projects that you've got approved, or even earlier, you would be talking about how many questions. You can have a number of questions. I think I've seen up to six questions. You have to decide what's going to be in those questions and what's important to you to get approved. Usually, the biggest question is the first question. And if you go with a second question, it needs to be structured that the second question can't just pass on its own. Second questions or third questions only pass if first questions pass. So, you know, I've seen some districts put in, you know, I have no idea what you're thinking of, you know, fields as a second question because that's something only some people may want to approve. I've had districts that have a lot of sports people involved, and they put everything in the first question because they want the people that are involved in sports and the people that are involved in academics, they want them all to approve that first question so they throw everything in. So, you know, it can go, I frankly think more than two questions, you kind of lose something because you get to that third question, and some people say, well, I'm going to vote no on something, so the third question goes out the window. So maybe you'll get two questions approved. Obviously, we have a lot of time to talk about this, but if the referendum fails, I think you have to think carefully about what's going to happen after that. I've worked with a lot of districts that have gone out a second and a third time and have failures three times. I've worked with other districts that might go out for a $10 million referendum and say, okay, the public spoke, we're going to go out for 9 million. And then the public says, wait a second, obviously you didn't need the 10 million in the first place because now you're coming back with 9 million, and they fail a second time. So I think there's really a lot of thinking to go into all of this when you structure, if it fails, you know, what do you do? And I also, you know, a public question often comes up when you're talking about a referendum, somebody stands up and says, what are you going to do if it fails? What's your plan? What are you going to do? You know, are you going to go on split sessions? Are you going to do the, you know, this is something drastic? We need to know what's going to happen if it does fail. So I think that's something that you have to think through also when you're talking to the public about the referendum. And the last bullet there is, you know, consider the community's appetite for debt. We've looked at numbers here for a zero tax impact for Wayne because you have debt coming off the books. A lot of districts in New Jersey are in the same situation. A lot of districts sold bonds 20 or 25 years ago, and they're coming up to the point where it's getting paid off. And it's a good opportunity to continue doing capital improvements with no tax impact for the taxpayers. So I think it's a smart thing to consider because it's, once you let it go, it's hard to get back again. Then you've got to go back to the voters and say, okay, now we're going to increase your taxes by $150, but, you know, you could have just let it stay steady and could have taken that opportunity. So I think that's an important thing, too. The facilities aid, you know, we've talked about it a little bit. Your architect, you know, knows this like the back of his hand, and he knows what projects you're considering, but the renovation, again, you get more for renovation, so it's 40% of the budget. New construction has to be justified, so unless you have unhoused students, and then what they, you know, your building is built for a certain number of students, your enrollment, and then they say, okay, if you don't have any unhoused students, we're not giving you any money for new construction. You could say you're going to build some science classrooms, but if you don't have unhoused students, you're not going to get any debt service aid for them. So that's a real big part of it. And again, your architect knows this stuff and can spot those numbers off the top of his head. The 85% of the commitment I mentioned, it really is not 40%, it goes down to 34%. And years and years ago, the state was giving out grants, and this was the last round, 20 years ago, they were giving grants or debt service aid. Those grants are going by the wayside, there's no more grants for them anymore. So this is a little bit about structuring the bonds. We have to decide on what the term is, and I mentioned that before. It's usually 15, 20, or 25 years. The average is usually a 20-year repayment right now. If you've got a large referendum and you're doing a lot of new construction, we could go out 25 or even 30 years, but it's rare that we're doing 25-year bonds right now. So I'm going to assume it's usually about 20 years. You minimize the tax impact by filling in debt coming off the books, and that's something that you will be able to consider. Borrowing term is really what I mentioned. It's statutory requirements. It goes by the type of building, so it goes by the type of building that you're building onto. And the architects and the attorneys talk about that and can come up with the real, not to exceed now for the borrowing term. Short-term notes are a one-year borrowing that districts are allowed to do after they get a referendum. It's a shorter, it's a lower interest rate, but it's a one-year borrowing that you might want to do for some reason. If, for example, you had debt coming off in one year, you wanted to do your referendum one year early, we could sell this short-term borrowing for one year, you'd only pay interest and then sell bonds after that. Right now, with rates going up, I would recommend selling the bonds as soon as you can. And I've been recommending that because we've been saying for years that rates were going to go up. Well, it's happening, it really is. So unless there's some compelling reason to sell a short-term note, I would lock in as soon as I could. If you have capital reserve, and I'm really not sure if you do, you can use that to pay debt service. You can use it whenever you want to pay debt service. Some districts that have a lot of capital reserve are using that in the first couple of years to try to offset the tax impact. We don't recommend you use it for the projects because you lose that debt service aid that I talked about. So the point is, if you've got capital reserve and you want to use it towards your debt service, you want to do the improvements for the whole amount of the project, sell the bonds for the whole amount of the project, but if you have capital reserve, use that for some of your debt service. The last bullet here, I haven't been able to talk about for years and years because there was zero interest earnings on investments. Just in the last three or four weeks, and we've been selling bonds and districts have been able to project interest earnings on their construction fund. As you can imagine, a construction fund goes like a bell-shaped curve. There's the design in the beginning, the building, and at the end, the punches. Rates have really been close to zero on these construction funds, but the last three bonds that we've sold, districts have been getting projections of $200,000 or $300,000 for interest earnings, and we haven't had this in probably 15 years. So it's a little bit to take the sting away from the increased interest rates, that you will be able to earn something in interest income, and put that towards your debt service when the time comes for the debt service to be paid. So that's kind of a new thing that we would actually have to be able to offset some of the tax impact. This is hard for the public to see, but I'm going to let Danielle talk about the numbers that we've prepared for you.
Sure. So we have a few assumptions here. As Robbie spoke to earlier, the district's existing debt is maturing in 2024, it can't seem long there, but in order to fill in that drop-off, the first breakeven column you see there is a $39 million. That assumes a 20-year bond issuance at a reasonable market rate of 3.5%. I think with previous, we've spoken with the architect prior, and only part of, I guess, the projects are going to be renovations, so we assume the 13.6% debt service aid. So assuming all these assumptions, you would be able to get up to $39 million for the 20 years. Overall, the tax impact is $104 on the average assessed value of the average home, which is at the bottom, that 229 number, that's different than the market value. You know, you can see your assessment on your tax bill. The next column shows the $1 million potential referendum amount. That's more of a calculator, just to see what it would cost per million dollars on, again, a 20-year issuance, you know, all the same assumptions as the $39 million. So it would be about $2.60 on the average home. And then third column, again, another calculator, $5 million, all of the same assumptions, and about a $13 impact on the average home. So anything less than the $39 million at this time, there would be a decrease in the debt service, so a decrease in the tax.
So really, the existing taxes that everyone's paying, about $100 of the existing tax bill going towards debt service. So if about a $39 million referendum was approved, that would stay steady.
So that would be $55 million worth of work?
Right.
That could be completed.
Right. And, you know, the debt service aid is about $5 million, so I think that's an important point to consider. Before they started doing this debt service aid, you know, 15, 20 years ago, districts like this didn't get any debt service aid. They opened it up to every district in the state, and it's, I'm not sure if you get much state aid generally, but the debt service aid is an opportunity for every district to get. And so this is about $5 million, that calculator. It's important to keep in mind. And again, you don't get that if you do a pay-as-you-go. Some districts do, you know, I'm going to save my money, I'm going to do this roof this year, and next year I'm going to do a boiler and that sort of thing, but you don't get any of that debt service aid. Questions?
Can you refer it on the general election?
You can now, November.
Did they change it recently?
Well, I think when they set those four dates up, those four years, because, well, a lot of districts didn't used to go to November. Remember how it used to go to April election?
Right.
But when they changed and set those four years, they put that November in there, too.
Because we know the elections in November.
Right.
Curious about that.
Yeah, yeah. I think there's still a few districts that do April, but not many, you know, that approve their budgets in April.
Right. Yeah, you can count them, I think, on one hand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had a question about the timeline because we're talking, just because, like, you said two months before, make sure you're telling everybody how much everything costs. How does vote by mail, is that happening or not with the referendum? And wouldn't you have to be out sooner than that? Because vote by mail is usually out like six weeks ahead or four weeks ahead?
That's true. I have to say, I guess it's not really my expertise area. I think of these as political campaigns that you have to kind of go, you know, six to eight weeks out, but I'm not sure about the whole vote by mail, what the timing is.
Because in our town, a lot of people vote by mail, so there's going to be a lot of people already filling those things out. So I feel like that really does change your timeline.
That question has to go to the county, isn't it? 90 days in a week?
Right.
So the county would have that information.
That would affect our marketing.
Yeah, I'm just saying it would affect our marketing timeline, whether or not it's going to be valid, if that makes sense.
But there have been a lot more vote by mail voters in recent elections, so you may not necessarily know the outcome of the vote that night.
That's true.
Yeah, that's the other thing, but it's just more a question of like changing the time.
But it's just more a question of, like, changing the timeline for marketing, just 'cause I know they have.
You mentioned the debt service aid for unhoused students. So here in Wayne, we're gonna have a lot of apartments coming on. Is there a particular time period that they're looking at? So let's say we have five hundred apartments coming in, in three years, and five hundred students who are, you know, seven hundred apartments with seven hundred students coming in in five years. Is there a particular timeline that, that the state considers?
I'm not exactly sure about that. I know that they ask you to do an, an enrollment study, you know, the five years out. And I'm not sure what their timing is of that. Obviously, they need, you need time to build, so I'm not really sure.
If I can add, the architect usually takes enrollment data, and we have to enter it in our long-range facility plan, which calculates our unhoused students for the school and then for the district. That's what she was alluding to at the beginning. If you don't have those unhoused students, then the new construction could be at risk in the sense that it's not, you know, available for us to, to advance in that, in those areas.
You know, I've always heard that those enrollment studies aren't accurate after five years. So that's kind of, so I'm thinking when you do the long-range facilities plan, five years out is what they consider.
And they take, they're taking the buildings and the capacity with a certain formula on how many can be in that school and how many we're sending to that school to determine unhoused.
And is debt service aid number, you would say that's a conservative number, or?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Great question.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Just let us know if you have any other questions. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thanks for having us first. I appreciate it.
Mr. Moffett will read the revisions to agenda items, please.
Yes, we have a few tonight. The first is under O, School Resource Finance. Again, this is PWS, so these changes were made, and the board will consider them on the twenty-first of April. So under O, School Resource Items, one through thirteen. Number thirteen is going to be revised. Donation of books donated to each school library is revised to the amount of a donation of one thousand four hundred and one dollars and ninety-two cents. Moving on to the Emergent Section, under X, we have two new items. At first, under X, School Resource Legal. X1 is Approval Termination, and that reads as follows. Resolve at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of a superintendent. Approve the termination of employee ID number six-eight-seven-five, effective April twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, for just cause. We are also adding an, an item X number two, which reads as follows. Resolve at Board Affirms the Superintendent's Decision on Suspension of Student ID Number One Three Nine Four One Two Seven Seven as required by NJAC Six A colon sixteen dash seven dot three. And that concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under Old Business.
Madam President, seeing no one rise.
We have committee reports this evening. Education Committee, Mrs. Kozier.
Tonight, the Education Committee met with myself, Ms. Padlam, Ms. Bluntch, and attendants as board members, along with administrators Donna Reisman, Paula Clark, and Matt McNeely. We discussed March third, Education Committee Minutes. We looked at the elimination of secondary final exams for this year, and we revisited the high school GPA calculation and what looking into that entails, along with looking at a couple of student issues, and approved the summer school program for students who need it, for the elementary students, and reviewed the policies that are upcoming on tonight's agenda under the public board session topics. And we went over the summer school agreement as well, and reviewed that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Committee, please. Mrs. Kazan.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, the Finance Committee met, myself, Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Fertal, and administrators Lee Moffett and Cheryl Leidig. We started with the agenda items, discussing the financial reports. Transportation agreements would show a ever-increasing cost to the district for routes that are outside of the district especially. And it's gotten to be so obscene that our Transportation Department is considering reaching out to Trenton, and it may be something the Board can put out a resolution about because it's, it's really becoming untenable. We discussed other contracts for the summer and for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. We have to approve those well in advance, or we won't get the transportation we need. We discussed the projects that are on tonight's agenda from our Maintenance Reserve and the other emergent items on the list. We discussed annual solicitations that are out and due back by five twenty-five for recurring contracts year-over-year. And, ah, we discussed the orders that some of the schools like to place now, even though they're for September, just pending approval by the Board of the Final Budget. And we also discussed the budget itself. And in light of the savings from the healthcare, we went over some numbers and possibilities for a possible, I swear I'm looking for, Mr. Moffett.
Revision to the budget.
Which will be presented to the full Board at the next meeting with the approval of the Superintendent and the Board President. The recommendation from the Committee will be shared with both of you. And that's pretty much it. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot Mrs. Leidig's FEMA report. Apparently, there was a lagging COVID grant that almost slipped our sticky fingers, and it's a potential three hundred thousand dollars from FEMA for COVID-related reimbursement. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozier. Next would be action on agenda items, please.
Madam President, I'd like to move the entire agenda to the second.
Discussion. Yes, Mr. Baba.
Madam President, I'm gonna make a motion that we table U number five for policy, because from what I read, that was not what this board was looking for when we talked about it the last time we were in a meeting. So I am asking for it to be sent back to the Committee.
Any other comments?
Oh, one-six-seven.
Any, any other comments?
I would like you to clarify, because what revisions you would like to make, just so that the policy committee can ignore.
Well, I figured we'd have a board discussion about the whole, what we want to change, because I wasn't the only one that didn't present that. So what I, okay, okay. So what I would like to see is, first of all, I, I never would agree to give up both sessions of allowing the public to speak. Timeframes, that's a different story, we can look at that. Cutting to five minutes, that I was good with. And the only other thing was, when we talked about one bite of the apple, in my mind, that was one, when a person gets up, they speak. And that's what, that's what they're allowed to do for that night. We're upping their time from three to five minutes, but they can speak one time during each session, not come back for another five minutes, not come, like, that's what I thought one bite of the apple meant. And I think that's kind of what a lot of people thought. So I'm kind of, that's kind of where I am. I, I think a sixty-minute limit on the agenda and ninety-minute on the other. We can always go either way. We can move it either way based on the policy, where we can end it or we can extend it. But I think that's where I'd like to start. But one bite of the apple was to stop having the back-and-forth. I speak for five minutes, I don't like what somebody else says, now I'm coming back up there to refute. And what happens is, we end up arguing, and then we lose track of what's really going on. And we are here to do board business. So that's what I'm, what I would look for in this policy. Is that clarification?
Mrs. Wan.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Baba on all that. When we were talking about the one bite of the apple, I meant people not coming back, getting the five minutes, but keeping both sections of the agenda items only and the general section. And I have expressed that at the committee meeting as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Kazan.
I took Covey's notes when we had this discussion the first time. And as far as the one bite of the apple, we received a legal opinion that if we're going to have a time limit, then if there's time unexpired, you can't stop the public from speaking twice. So that doesn't help that situation. So that would mean that they have until the clock runs out on the full portion. When we said ninety minutes, ninety minutes public portion, no one clarified which portion. So I took that to mean ninety minutes of public comment was sufficient for the meeting in total. Now, whether we wanna break that up into two sessions, we can revisit that, obviously. But again, how many hours do we need to spend listening to public comment on agenda items or items in general? If we're giving five minutes per person, we need to conclude the meeting before midnight. We don't start it until seven-thirty. We have presentations, we have a bunch of different things that we need to do as a board, board business in general. So give that another hour, hour and a, hour and a half. We're already at nine o'clock, so what are we going to, one, two in the morning? This is the reason for the time limit. So let's talk about what the Board really wants. Do the math, how much public portion is necessary? Granted, according to the law, we have to offer a public portion, but we are free as a board to limit the time so that we can do the board business within a reasonable period of time. Because if the public shows up here, obviously, at seven-thirty, they don't wanna have to listen for hours and hours of public comment. They wanna go home. So we don't wanna do it before the agenda. So if you wanna do a portion on agenda items only, say, make it a half hour. Extending time is always an option by the Board. But it's not a problem to set parameters. And then after the agenda, the work is done, we can, fine, you wanna do a second public portion? Then make that one an hour, make the first one a half an hour. But make a decision, because when we did this last year, we were very clear. We were gonna do one or the other. We were gonna set a time limit, or we were gonna go down to three minutes so that everybody could get their comments in, and we could go home at a reasonable hour and do board business. So what do you wanna do? I wanna go back on this one last time to policy.
Mr. Versace, please.
So I would just add, you know, clarification, add language to say, you know, extending time is, you know, up to the Board's discretion. So that, that wasn't in there, so, yeah.
It's not necessary to codify. It's, it's a thing. We can do whatever we want during the meeting. Make a motion to end, to, whatever. But what do you want, Mr. Versace?
I say a time limit with two sessions, with both sessions.
Okay, so half hour for the agenda, an hour for the general. You okay with that? Five minutes?
Well, if we're, if we're proposing ninety, you know, for the second session, I'm not interested.
No, we're proposing ninety total.
Ninety total, so.
And obviously, that's being revisited.
I think we allow sixty and, sixty and ninety. I mean, we don't, we don't get a lot of, I mean, based on my experience over the last, you know, thirteen and a half years being a Wayne resident. You know, I think the Zoom, the Zoom meetings were extended, went, you know, well beyond, you know, those ninety-minute, that ninety-minute session. So I think, you know, in, in a normal situation, I think, you know, we allow to sixty in, in the first session and ninety minutes in the second session.
Mrs. Wan.
I was gonna say, can we add a language maybe to say that it should not go over past midnight unless we agree? I mean, when it comes to the midnight time to kind of get that in, you know, in the policy?
Well, that, that's, the Board can still make a motion to extend time, so.
No, I know, but I mean, it's just.
Mrs. Wan.
Yes, I, I agree, but I think if you're concerned for the administration and people not being somewhere past midnight, maybe that we would revisit at that meeting at that time, what it looks like. Are there a lot of people still to talk, and we would have at least a discussion to do so?
Mr. Baba, Minister Duff.
She's been about how many she wants for the beginning of the second.
We can go back and revisit that in a moment, yes.
Sorry, you can go first.
Just for everybody in the public, if we're talking about a sixty-minute and ninety-minute public session, that means that technically, if we were to do that all upfront, our meeting doesn't start till ten. That means if we're, and if we're talking about a twelve o'clock timeline, we're here starting at five o'clock, at four-thirty. Some of us even at four. That's seven hours that were, that you're in this building or at chambers that, you know, and, and I, I recognize all the comments from the public, I have no, no problem with everybody has to speak. But as we've seen, and as I've seen over the years, a lot of them are repetitive. You know, we hear the say, it's the same repetitive thing over and over. And I understand that everybody wants to have their, their voice heard. But it's, that's seven to eight hours, you know, of our time that I don't know if that's what we really need. I think that's just over excessive.
Mr. Baba.
I'm, I have a question about something, because, John, this one's for you. It's my understanding that even though we use Robert's Rules, that if we, in the policy, say that we are going to deviate from it for the meeting notes or minutes, that we can change to allowing one person to speak. That is correct, from what, everything I've read, so.
Yeah, avoids five laws to control over Robert's Rules.
Okay, so we can then put that in there to say, one bite of the apple is, you can speak one time. Correct?
But not if we can stay the same time. That's, that's probably.
Yes, you do have the discretion. Some boards have one public session, a lot of boards have two public sessions. One of my concerns is the section that talks about you can speak once, but you can't speak again until everyone's spoken. Robert's Rules of Order does talk in terms of people having up to two opportunities to speak at a meeting for a total time of ten minutes. So that's where you would get the five and five, along those lines. That's my only concern. I mean, anyone could challenge your board policy. Most of what I've heard is defensible, but that's the one area where I think I would try to keep something in there along those lines.
Mrs. Wan.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, ask. Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, ask, on the agenda item section time, how long, what was the longest time that the time has ran? So, as far as I've been watching and sitting here, it hasn't, and you're laughing, but while I've been here, we've barely had people, and maybe if it added up to five minutes or 10 minutes, most of the time, so that one hour is really inflated time of the meeting. I think it, we probably won't have unless there's something major that we would use up the entire hour. That's just an observation that I have so far.
Something else?
Is there a way that we can table this and revisit it at a later time and keep the current policy in place since we haven't had a major issue in the recent past in regards to this?
You want to keep the current three-minute?
And if people have two bites at the apple, we haven't had a time limit?
Oh, yes, Mr. Bubba.
But they have to, he'd be Mr. Duffy and seconded by Mr. Pavlak, the whole agenda. And then, you're correct, Mr. Bubba then asked for a potential either table, and I have a note, or sending back to committee, so...
Table's fine, I'm going to table our committee.
Table and send back to committee for the one last time?
Yeah. As long as we, we can come up with an idea, like, how about this? How about a half hour for agenda? We can always extend, because we are going to run into a problem when we do the referendum. There is going to be a lot of people who are going to want to speak on that particular topic.
I agree.
So...
There'll probably be a special meeting, you know, one like a town hall.
Well, but, but if we do, what if we did a half hour upfront on agenda and then we did an hour and a half on the back? That still cuts it to two hours. At the rate we're going right now, that would be 10 o'clock roughly. That would be probably pretty much done by 10:00. Is that...
Are you saying at five minutes?
Want 30 and 90?
Are you saying 30 and 90?
Rather than 30 and 60, I mean, 90 and 60.
If we went through that entire time, we wouldn't, and did it all upfront, that'd be 9:30 start.
No, 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 you're doing, you're doing a half hour upfront.
I want a section of it.
On the 7:30.
It's two, it's two sections, it's not going to be done.
I understand.
So, if we start that at 8:00, that would be over by 8:30. The agenda voting and stuff will be done by quarter to nine, and then 90 minutes would be, would be 10:15.
So, as we're circling, so I'm trying to follow. So, we have the original amendment is now amended to table or not?
Sure. So, take a motion to move the entire agenda... Will you accept my...
You accept my?
Right.
Wait, did you get a second? I don't think you got a second.
Yeah, I did.
You, you seconded my motion.
Yes.
To what, to table it?
To table and send it back to committee.
Well, I cannot go back to committee without a full discussion as to what we're going to do in committee.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to classify, clarify this right now. You're, you're okay with the half hour, 90 minutes? I'm okay with that. So, if everybody else, and we are at, at this point, three and three because we are already, we can't do the, evidently, John, you wouldn't add to the policy where they could speak one time during each session? Because technically, they'd be getting two, they would be able to speak during agenda and during the open.
I'm more comfortable if you say they can speak in each session one time.
One time, in each session, okay. Then that's what I would like to do. Half hour upfront, on agenda items, you could speak one time. 90 minutes on the second session, you could speak one time, five minutes. That's, that's the recommendation that I have, and that's what my motion's going to be for. Let's modify it to that tonight, and then we don't have to send it back to committee, we can take the vote tonight.
Mrs. Kazan?
To clarify, since you gave me the legal opinion that you're changing it.
Well, no.
Well, yeah, you said we couldn't force the one bite, because for instance, if we have a 90-minute public portion, second half for the, any item, and people stop getting up after 60 minutes, they've spoken, everyone's spoken, that's it, it ends? Or does someone still get to come up because we have another half hour pending on the 90-minute total?
Yeah.
That was the question that you disagreed with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of if there was one opportunity to speak, that's what the provision's in there, to say that you can speak, but you have to wait until everyone's done before you speak a second time.
So, you're saying they get to come back for a second bite, you're still saying it?
Yeah, but I'm saying as a compromise here, if you're having two different sessions, you could say that they can speak in each one, one time. And that gives me the two, that gives me the two sessions, I mean, the two opportunities to speak in a total of 10 minutes.
So, then they would get one bite at the apple at each session?
Yes.
So, then we can limit it to that.
That would be one way to do it.
I'm asking the attorney, thank you.
Yeah, that's a compromise.
Okay, so, back to that. So, that has to be rewritten. Yes. I'm trying to take notes, Madam President, since I have to take it back to committee.
Mr. Frasatos?
Right, we were next. What's your timeline?
I'm not opposed to what you said. Just so that we could have the potential of hearing more people in the first portion, would it be something that we could then, because only at five minutes, potentially we can only have six people to speak?
Well, we can extend it if there are people that are there, and that's what we would do.
Anyone can make a motion.
I mean, we can make the motion to extend it anytime, anybody can.
All right. I was just going to say, should we try three minutes for the open? First, first portion?
First for me.
It's fine with me.
I, I just want to...
Wait, wait, yeah.
What are we doing? What are we going to...
We don't want anything, this is going back to committee, I'm taking notes.
Well, I, again, I think, I regret it from the board president. But now, there was a minus, right? They were pulling it out, we're tabling it, and we were mending it, and then sending back to committee. So, we have to clarify so everyone can make that morally reasonable.
So, we'll take it out, send it back to...
Discussion, the committee can do it properly, like, at this point.
Send it back to committee, so that it can be written properly, defined exactly, you know, whether it's 30 minutes or three minutes per speaker in the first session, 90 minutes the second time, both times one bite at the apple. So, we'll send it back to committee for clarification and move forward.
Well, he just made his proposal, so we have a new proposal on it.
Can we start over? I want to make the motion to move the entire agenda with the exception of U5 to send back to committee. So, you're accepting... I'm going to make a motion, move everything except for U5 and send that back to committee.
Okay, we're not done discussing.
I don't think we can do that, actually. Just, and I'm not saying it's, and I don't think we actually can do that, because there was a motion in the second on the other one.
So, that's it, let's start all over.
Okay, we're done discussing.
He's just spoke. Just spoke.
Excuse me. Mr. Bubba? Would you like to withdraw your motion and then we will start over?
Yes, we'll inform the agenda, this is a motion that requires discussion.
I think you can vote on what you said initially. You had a motion to move the whole agenda, and then you amended that to say you're moving the whole agenda except you're going to table U5. And that's still before the board. I think you can simply vote on that. I mean, your discussion is just to inform the committee on what to do. I mean, that's not part of the motion.
Okay, that's fine with me.
So, do I, I have the second from Mr. Duffy to... We, I'm sorry, we can continue to discuss during board business at the end.
No, 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 we're discussing a motion that's not over with.
Well...
We're still discussing it.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, this is substantial changes to it, it's got to go back to committee anyway.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't vote on it tonight.
We're not.
You can't.
No, 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 we're not. We're just voting on moving the whole agenda and tabling this, but the committee asked to have...
For direction.
Direction, and that's why the discussion's just to direct.
Thank you, I'm waiting for them to finish in the direction, that's all.
To what they're doing. We're not amending any motions on the language here on the policy.
So, I have a couple of notes. 30 minutes in the beginning.
Wait, I'm sorry, I thought we had to vote on Mr. Bubba's motion first.
No, we're just...
We're discussing it.
Yeah, when we're done discussing, we can...
All right.
So, anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, 30 minutes in the first session for board agenda items, one bite at the apple at three minutes per person, okay? Second time is going to be a 90-minute spot for five minutes per person, one bite at the apple. No matter how much time is left after the 90 minutes, if it's six, if there's 30 minutes left, it's only one bite at the apple and that's it?
We can put that in the policy.
And then, and we can always see more people there after 90 or before, after 30, and make a motion to extend it.
Correct.
That's good with everybody?
Yeah. I'm, I'm good with that. Everybody else?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
Three minutes, five minutes, 30, 90. One bite.
One bite.
Rerate.
All right.
So...
Yes, to everything else.
I will make the motion to move the entire agenda with the exception of U5 to send back to committee with what we just discussed. That piece is the rest of the board.
So, Mr. Duffy, you can be the second.
And then, do you take a whole poll? Can you get a moment?
You approve.
Please.
On the tabling piece or the whole?
The whole.
Okay. On the whole agenda, minus U5, the tabling to go back to committee for extensive rewrites, taking a roll, Mrs. Lentic?
I say yes to all except abstain on S and a no to O, section 13.
Okay, so you're abstaining on S?
S, S4, S4-1.
S4-3, oh, a name only, got you. And then, so, pardon?
No to O, section 13.
O-13, as a no, everything else is the apple. Mr. Bubba?
Is the board on the agenda?
I don't have a O.
Is a name that's on?
Oh, this is not O, but it was a convention.
Okay.
Okay, just so, to be clear, WP, WPS, it's a work session, again, this isn't something that is action today, it rolls into next, next agenda for the 21st, just so the board's right. Mr. Bubba?
I'm, I think it's O-13, but I'm going to abstain on that because I'm curious if we vetted everything before we get to that point. So, I'm going to stand, abstain on that, everything yes to the rest.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Fasatos?
Yes, everything, I will abstain on S, version number four, and I will vote yes on O-13, we do have to assure that the votes will be that.
Mr. Frasatos?
I need to abstain on S dot four, I'm going to abstain on O dot 13, and a no on U dot three.
And all, yes on all?
And yes on all.
Mr. Frasatos?
I'm going to abstain on S4, number two myself, and a yes on the rest.
And this is cut up?
Yes.
Motion parried.
Wasn't that easy?
Yeah. Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legitimately responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Thank you.
I can do this in three minutes. Marie Pranza?
I have a motion, I have a motion.
I'll motion.
Mr. Bubba and Mrs. Kumar, thank you.
Hi, Marie Pranza, Wayne resident, I'm doing it in three minutes. I just want to say thank you for that motion seemed to make a lot of sense. I think that the audience too, the public, doesn't necessarily want to be here until midnight either. Certainly, everybody wants to be heard, but having been at many meetings, we do kind of hear the same thing over and over and over again. So, to the extent that we can place some parameters around the discussion while still giving everybody the opportunity to speak, I think that makes a lot of sense. In reading the policy as it was written, number three in the policy where it gave the public the right to speak on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on the same topic have been heard, the way it was written, it seemed to give everybody the ability to speak on multiple topics as long as it was only once on one topic. So, just, I want to put that out there that you're talking about not a topic necessarily, but a, a public portion, right? That, I mean, I think that's what you're saying, I could speak probably on 10 different topics and filibuster the entire public session. So, just want to clarify that in the policy. Regarding the policy on the dress code, I just want to thank the, the board for making the changes. I think the changes are very positive in the policy. I think it makes the policy more clear, removes the ambiguity that was there previously, and also takes away some of the derogatory connotations that were in the policy as it, as it was presented originally. I just have one, one suggestion on number four of the policy. It talks about not, pupils may not wear clothing which promotes any illegal behavior such as the use of alcohol or drugs in either text or illustration, inappropriate language, or which denigrates any, and here's where my, I'm agreeing with all that, which denigrates any racial, ethnic, or religious group in the text or illustration. We should also be including gender and sexual identity as to not be denigrated in any apparel. So, I just want the board to consider that, they're protected classes as well, I just want that to be considered. That's it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Carline. I live on Pereira Avenue in Wayne. And I'm here coming tonight because I was concerned about some lesson plans that were shared around on Facebook as well as through email, and it's in regards to the New Jersey's new health education lesson plans, K through 12. They were stamped from the Advocates for Youth, which apparently is a very progressive organization that's out of DC. It was shared by a number of New Jersey legislators and senators, along with a Dropbox file that had all the recommended lesson plans for what should be taught for health and sex education, K through 12. Quite frankly, it was really disturbing to see what was part of this, especially for after end of second grade. There were many that were in regards to, for first grade in terms of gender identity, if there's, you know, if you are a boy and you have feelings of wanting to be a girl, it's perfectly normal. This is what was suggested to be taught at first grade. In second grade, there was quite a bit in terms of learning how different body parts for both boys and girls, and including, you know, helping them understand vulva, clitoris. This is second grade. I'm hoping to understand, you know, what does the district have planned in terms of the new health curriculum? Are we going to be able, as a public, be able to see what the lesson plans and the curriculum are? Will that be presented to, to us publicly so we understand and can make an informed decision whether we want our children to be part of this or to opt out? So, raising this as a concern and would appreciate if you guys could look into it. I'm happy to share with you the emails, the files that are going around, and really get confirmation on whether... get confirmation on whether this is the true curriculum that our children are going to be working off of. Thank you.
Sal Biondo, 23, Rich Place. Talking about the follow, about Wayne High School Athletics, a rerate, how important it will be, and going forward to fill and hire the most qualified people, really directing this towards whoever is working at the Personnel Committee pertaining to athletics. We really have a need for more energetic, more passionate advocates for our students, especially athletes. I see in the agenda that Mr. Johnson's retiring as of 30th of Wayne Hills. He means a lot to the athletic program there. Student athletes look up to him, the kids look up to him. Tremendous loss to us, and we're sad to see him go. I'm sure the Athletic Department would agree. A lot of the teachers and students would agree. He's had such a great positive impact, words of encouragement always, and listening toward students always, whenever they needed to be listened to. These are the type of people we need in our district, and we need to attract them. Thank you.
I assume nobody else comes to the board? Motion will close out.
New business? This is no point about you doing that. Well, this is next. Dr. Chipp?
So just in response to some of the comments, so, Mr. President, you made a point, you had a question, and you just made a number of points. Ms. Carline, what I'd like to do, just mention briefly that there are dozens, well, there's probably hundreds of organizations that have what they believe is the correct curriculum, whether it is for history or for, you know, a variety of different subjects, physical education, health education. So in the end, the district has its curriculum, just based on the New Jersey Student Learning Secrets. Any information that might be out there that's circulated is not necessarily something that is in any way, shape, or form connected to this district. I'm not sure what document you're referring to, but I'm sure it did not come from the Wayne Board of Ed based on what you described as what students would be learning in those guidelines. So at this point, there is a process the district goes through if there were changes to the curriculum. That is certainly a public discussion. It's something that goes through committee. It's something that the public is allowed to comment on. And so, but right now, there are no planned changes to the curriculum. So, so we're recently, the date is the second.
It's supposed to be the second. We have this the third.
Okay, that's right. So just a comment regarding Eid and the fact that this year is scheduled on May 2nd, but it is district's calendar being recognized on May 3rd. So that has created a concern in the community because it's a different day. What we've learned since actually including Eid in the calendar is it is impossible really to, to definitively determine when that holiday will be held one year in advance or more than a year in advance when we actually develop our calendar. So the possible strategy we could use is to readapt the calendar. Next year, it's scheduled for Saturday. But what we would have to do is readapt our calendar in the future with language specific to that holiday, like we have for spring break, that indicates that the holiday could change. And so that would be a determination that would be made once we know officially what the holiday is. And so that would be our approach for the future. But for now, we have, I know, a number of, any number of employees, any number of families that probably have plans, so it's very difficult to change the date of a holiday that's already in the calendar, and I guess the people already have plans for that, for that holiday.
Obviously, anyone taking off for religious reasons.
Okay, so anyone taking off for religious reason, regions, excuse me?
That's right.
Religious reasons is, that's an excused absence. And so if the district is say why that is, is a liable absence, so no one would be marked absent as in terms of attendance for being absent for religious reasons.
Thank you. New business? Comments, questions? Okay, Mr. Prasaka?
I just wanted to say that I was late to tonight's public meeting because I was able to attend the all Wayne concert, and it was beautiful, it was excellent. I wish everybody was able to attend. They did acknowledge the board and Dr. Tovac and Ms. Reitman for allowing, you know, our district to have these musicians, you know, they had the band, they had the chorus there. So it was, all of our elementary schools were represented, and they did a great job. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Mrs. Kazan? Thank you. Ms. Carline, I appreciate you coming, and I just want to caution everyone that gets this misinformation in the community. It's unfortunate that you would even have to be afraid that we would be teaching this sort of thing because people spread it on Facebook, and I've said it once, and I'll say it till the day I leave this board, don't get your information from there. If you want to know what's really going on, that's what we're here for. You can send us an email, we'll be happy to respond and give you the truth of the matter. There's, it's just nefarious behavior, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mrs. Monck?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that April is the Autism Acceptance Awareness Month, and I've seen lots of great activities throughout Instagram from our schools that the schools are participating, so I just wanted to bring that up to the point's attention, and I was happy to see that.
Thank you. I would like to thank my fellow media specialists, librarians. That's what I did in the school district before I retired about six years ago. And it's always wonderful for me to help honor my fellow media specialists and thank them for the work that they do. And I want to wish everyone a wonderful week and going into spring break. And everyone, be safe, be well, and we'll see you next time. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Second.
Okay.